Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Ruffridge.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Carey.
Present.
Chilton.
Present.
Parker. Hutchings.
Here.
Student Representative Knowles.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Are there any changes to the Agenda Consent Agenda? Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, February 9, 2022, council special meeting minutes, February 9, 2022, council regular meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2022-004, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $85,000 in the general fund for additional snow removal services, introduced by the city manager. Public hearing to be held on March 9, 2022. Ordinance 2022-005, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $60,000 in the general fund for additional legal services, introduced by the city manager. Public hearing on March 9, 2022. Action items, action memorandum 2022-003. 2022 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointment, introduced by the mayor for Connie Hawker, seat D, term ending December 31, 2022. Action memorandum 2022-004, request for an excused absence from the March 9, 2022, regular city council meeting for Vice Mayor Parker. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your phone. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll look for Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. So having, hearing no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing no objections, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Carey.
Mr. Mayor, since we've now approved the agenda, I'd like to again state that I have a conflict of interest over action item 2022-005. One of the two applicants for many grants is a organization on which I am an officer. And so when we get to that, I will step down from the council.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next item on the agenda is item number four, presentation with prior notice. And that would be Project Homeless Connect 2022 Report by Jody Stewart, the Project Homeless Connect media chairperson. Ms. Stewart.
So I don't know if Leslie is on Zoom or not. She's not feeling very well, so I wasn't going to expect her to be so. So there, I'm not going to be doing the presentation. It decided that's just way too complicated. So thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'm very happy to be here on behalf of Project Homeless Connect. In your packets, you will have the report for the 2022 event as well as the presentation. So although it's not a fancy PowerPoint, we get tired of those anyways. So our goals are always to reduce stigma, to bring the community together in order to address homelessness in such a way that people feel empowered to get the services that they need at the time that they need it. We do that, and when we do that, we collect a lot of data. And this year, in contrast to a lot of prior years, we are looking only at COVID data. So 2020 event through 2022 event. And to explain a little bit reasons why our organization structure has kind of changed and modified over time. And so sometimes it's a little bit confusing considering that I'm sure lots of folks have heard about the Kenai Peninsula Homeless Coalition, the work being done with the shelter in Nikiski, the Nikiski Shelter of Hope, Project Homeless Connect, the Continuum of Care. There's lots of words floating around there. So the Continuum of Care, just so everybody is clear, is the funding arm of HUD. So the state of Alaska gets monies from the federal government of HUD. And then we have to have a continuum of care in order to receive those funds and then fund housing and homelessness projects. Underneath this continuum of care for the Kenai Peninsula Borough, so we envelop the entire borough, we have the Kenai Peninsula Homeless Coalition. Their job is really looking at how can we then use those funds, get more funds, build off of that to create shelter. Our focus is that people need to have shelter. So then we also have a one-day event, Project Homeless Connect, which is the separate arm. And from there, we do our point in time count, which creates the data that then goes back to HUD that funds the continuum of care. So you can see that it's all interconnected, but really it's under the umbrella of continuum of care. So the data, 2020 through 2022, it's been a downward decline in participants. There's a number of reasons that we think this is. But I can tell you that, again, the number of people that show up is different than the number of household members. So for this year, we had 122 total people represented, meaning that if mom came in and had three kids, those three kids are counted as well. So the total number is 122. Always, we check, you know, male, female disabilities. But disabilities is where I'd like to point my, your attention to. So consistently, the people that need services have disabilities. So we have people that are homeless, vulnerable population. They have disabilities, another vulnerability that makes finding housing that may be appropriate even that much more difficult. So when I get to talking about our housing opportunities here on the peninsula, I think this really paints quite the picture. Generally speaking, not very many people were using emergency housing. Lots of folks were either staying with friends, family, loved ones, people's couches, or places that are literally not habitable. That is fairly consistent. But emergency housing over 2020 and 2021 was still being utilized. We spoke with Brandon Kyle with Salvation Army, and even his numbers are down for people using emergency housing funds. Generally speaking, the main purpose is the catch-all purpose for why people are homeless. So they get divorced, they lose an income, they get sick. Well, look where we are. We're in COVID times. That can be devastating to a family if someone is in the hospital. So those types of reasons are generally why they are homeless. So our 2022 point in time count asked, where did you sleep on January 25? That's the data that we have to collect. And that is really what's considered best practice by HUD to collect data on the day after the point in time, so that way we can get as much of an accurate look as possible. I do want to remind you that in 2021, we did 10 full days of outreach. So we went out to the community in each area across the peninsula and sent volunteers and information out to them to connect people to resources. So 10 days. So 2020 was a one-day event, 2022 is a one-day event. 2021 is kind of the oddball. For this year, we found that 31% said that they were homeless. 3% said that they had just left an institution of some sort, meaning it could be drug and alcohol treatment, it could be a jail or prison. And 65% said that they had a temporary or permanent home, even though they were coming to Project Homeless Connect to receive services.
Do you want to ask first of all, do you want questions now or do you want to wait till the end?
I'd like to wait till the end because some of them might be answered along the way.
Excellent.
So episodes of homelessness, really, the data for this year, 43% said that this was their first time being homeless. So they'd never been to a Project Homeless Connect. They never really had to deal with these issues. So 43%, which is almost half of the people that participated. 89% stated that if an emergency cold weather shelter was available, they would use it and reported their primary needs, transportation, and that will always be a primary need, employment, food. And then secondary was, interestingly enough, clothes was a secondary need that was higher than it has been in the past. And social security information was also higher than it has been in the past. We had three animals who received services through our veterinary care, seven people that received pet supplies. Over, you know, we had 16 people enrolled in Ladies First Program, which is a breast and cervical cancer screening program. The data shows that we are impacting people in a positive way. We are giving them services even though our numbers this year are drastically different. The impact is really the services that they're receiving. So what does this really boil down to? This year's presentation is a little bit different because I'm looking at things in a more well-rounded view as we move this coalition further. And Alaska ranks number 15 for needing the highest wage to afford a two-bedroom apartment. Apartment, two bedrooms, that's all you get. So the data that I'm going to share with you is just a simple two-bedroom apartment, not very large. And Alaska is the most expensive for people on social security. The data shows that for you to afford a two-bedroom apartment here in Alaska, it's $23.74 that you have to make. Our living wage, that's going to be 30% of that goes towards your housing. That's what HUD has determined. 30% is all you're allowed to pay. Anything beyond 30% is too much and is considered not feasible in the long run. Our minimum wage is $10.34. So you have to do twice that much to afford a two-bedroom apartment. I think this really puts into perspective the housing shortage that we have here on the peninsula, as well as the discrepancy in funds available to get what little housing is available. You'll also see that Alaska is ranking pretty high in relation to the rest of the United States. We rank high for our wage that is needed to afford that two-bedroom household alongside Washington, Oregon, and California. And I never like to compare our state to any of those three. So again, this year, we're, we're really trying to broaden everyone's awareness about the housing shortage, the livable wage concept, the fact that we're now branching off to address more needs in our community through the homelessness coalition. And really, again, I want to say thank you very much to the city of Soldatna, to the council for supporting this project. We greatly appreciate it. You can see that we have a slew of sponsors that really stepped up this year and did phenomenal. And again, we believe that no one deserves to lose hope. So that's why I'm here today to speak for those that probably aren't going to see coming in this door on a Tuesday night, Wednesday night, what day is this? So, you know, I'm, I'm really speaking for those folks that are out there walking the streets because they have no place to go. And a little tidbit, one of the things that we apparently missed out this year on getting the memo is we needed to provide ice cleats. So we did not provide ice cleats. I'm wearing ice cleats right now. I don't know how anybody is walking out there without them. So that's something we're going to have to look at for next year. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, you had a question?
Thank you. And I want to start one from what you were going through. And first of all, thank you very much for being here. On types of homelessness for 2022, again, you provided this information, homeless 31%, institutional 3%, and then you said temporary, permanent 65%. Is there any breakdown, would you have any sense of a breakdown of, of that 65%, which is obviously two-thirds of the whole group? What percent is temporary versus what percent is permanent? Any idea?
You know, I, I would love to be able to say yes. But unfortunately, HUD dictates how we collect the data. They provide us with a questionnaire. The questionnaire is what we can ask folks, and we're not really allowed to collect any data beyond that that goes in the report. So unfortunately, we don't have the detailed breakdown that we have had in the past, which used to list pretty much any type of housing possible. We were limited this year in HUD's requirements.
Second question, this is a much broader, and you're a resource, you're a great resource, and so I'm going to ask this question, although it may be impossible, but... Are there particular areas of the Kenai Peninsula Borough which has a greater problem with homelessness? And the second one, which kind of goes with it? How well is this borough doing? What more do we need to do?
Oh, boy. You, you asked some very difficult questions to answer.
You're the expert.
Oh, I don't feel like the expert right now with that. Advocate. I'll, I'll start. What can you do? Advocate. As a city, as a city council, please advocate for state funding and federal funds to come to the peninsula, to your city, in regards to addressing homelessness. That is the biggest thing that you can do. As far as the, the nuts and bolts, the reality is we are in a shortage of places to house people. When you have a shortage of places to house people, it becomes how creative can you get in order to find a place? So recently, the Nikiski Shelter of Hope was opened. 22 beds are available because of insurance. And an emergency cold weather shelter currently is not part of that insurance plan. So that's another way that we can advocate is how can we make it easier to insure shelters so that way they can function cold weather-wise? It's been a problem from the get-go, partly why we didn't see the churches open up their doors when they volunteered and said, please sign me up. As far as places that are, I believe, hit more harshly, I'm going to put on my probation hat, so good thing I'm wearing my shirt today. So we serve people that come out of jail literally with nothing. Predominantly, they are releasing to the Soldatna and Kenai area, and then they're forced to live on the outskirts because there's, again, no housing functionality in the middle of Kenai and Soldatna for those folks. These are people that may or may not have substance use issues, and there's a wait time for even the substance use beds. There's a wait time to get into places like Freedom House. There's wait lists. It's not like these things are immediate for when people get out of institutions. We do see that seasonally, it has impacted more in Seward and Homer. So their numbers increase more in the summer. We see more steady numbers. So it's a little bit more consistent for us in the Soldatna, Kenai central area.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
And again, I appreciate it very much. And I was also interested in the south of Kachmacke. Over the years, I've heard often that there are many people from the Kenai Peninsula that are in Anchorage that are, again, as part of homeless. Would you estimate that there are a significant number of, at least former residents of the Kenai Peninsula Borough that are homeless in Anchorage or in that area?
Absolutely. So our homelessness population is very transient. They will be found in places in Anchorage and Fairbanks one year to the next. There's no rhyme or reason. They go possibly where the work is. We've seen, you know, those same folks that are from the peninsula pop up in like Dutch Harbor because that happens to be a good fishing job that year. By the, the winter, you know, things kind of dry up, and then they might be back here. And then the next summer, they might be in Sipka. So our state is really odd for that, but we're pretty consistent that we do have transient folks all around the state, even though they claim the peninsula as their home.
Thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, Jody, for the presentation once again. So I'm looking at the reason, primary reason for homelessness. And you've got lost of jobs, work hours are cut. But there's businesses throughout the peninsula that are looking for people to work. Does that ever come up in discussions with folks?
Always. You know, it's about practicality, and I hate this. I hate the circular spiral that happens. You fill out a resume, you go to the job center, you get services to, to be able to do that. But you don't have a residence to put down. So then you got to try and find a residence to put down. Is it a PO box? Who can I use? How can I get follow-up? Do I have a working phone? So many individuals that are homeless have to prioritize where their money is spent. So maybe one week, they do have a working phone, and they can get a call back from an employer to go to an interview after they submitted a resume. Let's say they don't. Now how are the employers going to get ahold of them? Very difficult. And what's the likelihood of an employer trying to reach out again to somebody that shows sporadic work environments, which is more often what we see on a resume from an individual experiencing homelessness? That, that employer is going to try again and again to see if they can reach them when maybe they don't have good communication. They don't have good reliable addresses. And so there's, there's this circular thing that if they have those things, they could get a job, but they don't have those things, so it's hard to get a job. And thus, the conundrum about the, the lack of employment.
Thank, thank you. And it's, it's nice to see numbers coming down. I don't expect that we'll ever get down to, to zero. But again, thank you for the work that you and, and the rest of the team do to help.
Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jody, as always. This is a exciting year, I think, to have this conversation. There's a lot of progress, I feel like that's been made, thanks to the efforts of all the people mentioned in here. And I, it's just incredible to me, I think, still the, I think it's on the front of this page. Reduce stigma, build a more compassionate community. I still feel like that's the, the, the barrier in such a huge way. I think you do such a good job in here, but some of the data is, is hidden at, at showing the issue for what it is. I think you speak to it well. That homelessness doesn't really look like what some of our mental images of homelessness is. I think when you speak about them being transient a lot of times, or working, or finding work wherever you can find work, what you're speaking to is that people that are trying to survive any way possible. And sometimes, whether it's through disability, or illness, or loss of job, or who knows, the world is a hard place, people just get down. And compassion is still something that is limited in the cases of people experiencing homelessness because there's a lot of stigma around some of those people. One of the things, and I don't know if someone else was going to mention this, but besides housing, what is your primary need right now was probably the most touching thing that was part of our packet as part of the exit survey. So I just wanted to touch on a couple. I don't really have a question. I'm just more making a statement, sorry.
I love your statements. Keep going.
To reconnect a vehicle, and I think that speaks to your transportation issue, food and blankets, medical care, therapy, counseling, housing, even though that was the question, besides housing, what do you mean, housing? Being able to work, work is mentioned on here a lot of, a lot of different times. Health services, legal services. We're really, and then the other portion of this is underneath of the section labeled "primary reason for homelessness" is, is "other" was the majority of people. And it's just a list of sort of the bad things that can happen to people just in the general living of life. Rental trailer falling apart, spent a bunch for a funeral. Here's the one, having bad luck. I mean, I, I just, I, I say all that to say, I, I'm just blessed to know you and others like you, Kathy being one, Tim another, and everyone else. Leslie is an incredible human being. And I just, I'm, I am blessed to know that there's people with compassion that continue to put out there the effort. I'll say it again, as I've said every year, that you've come. One event a year is great, but the compassion and the need to see others in our community as needing assistance in a bigger way, it really just takes people helping people. We can have services, and we can have a shelter, and we can have all the things, but sometimes it's going to just take people helping people. And I appreciate that you're doing that work and others like you putting in your own time and effort to help others that sometimes are a little easy to ignore. So thank you for that, and I will stop my comments now.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson.
Thanks again, Jody, for being here. So Mr. Ruffridge kind of talked a little bit about this, but I, I want to ask you a question and see if you know the answer to it. So I'll put you on the spot a bit. But based on some of the things that, that he read, and I think some of the things that I have kind of understood to be true, and I want to say that I'm going to attribute this hopefully to the right source, where we've talked about some of the Students in Transition Program, where we found, or it has been found, that a lot of young adults are essentially homeless because of couch surfing and some of those things, or, or have some other difficulty. And so it was interesting to me to read this slide about the temporary-permanent numbers, 65%. And I was actually kind of surprised that, you know, again, this is going back to the image of homelessness, that, you know, we may, in this community, may not see, I'll call it the stereotypical image of homelessness. But it seems that I've heard, or that I've understood, that a lot of people in those situations that might be couch surfing or might be, like somebody else said it, trying to survive any way they can. And certainly, some people came to the event that, that may be fit in that category. But I'm wondering if there is any data, or do you have any idea working with this population? How big of a population is that really? I'm, I'm kind of likening this to, you know, one, one injury or one missed paycheck away from homelessness. And it seems to me that that is a bigger population than obviously is, is reflected here. Do you have any data on that?
I can tell you that pre-COVID, yes, we had data on that. COVID, I can't. Where we begin comparing apples to soccer balls. It just doesn't quite work to compare it. And so that's why this presentation is different than in years past, because before, we could have provided that information. We could have really been able to continue to look at how, how people living in situations that it's not their home, but they still consider it their home, and they don't consider themselves homeless, is very high. I heard a story a long time ago in regards to rural Alaska. And I'm not necessarily saying that the Kenai Peninsula is rural, and certainly not necessarily Soldatna or Kenai specifically, but it does hearken back to this concept. And it was a story of a family that had their brothers, sisters, that were adult with mom, dad, grandparents, and then their children in the house. And it turned out that this particular home in rural Alaska had about 15 people living in it, and it was really a house that was meant for four. So what they had to do is they had to sleep in shifts. So they would give priority to the children, so that way they knew that those kids could go to school. So they were given priority to the beds. So they had the two bedrooms. And then the parents that actually had jobs that were during the day were given second priority. Those that were working in the evenings, they would switch. So those kind of worked out. But then we still have, you know, the grandparents in the family that weren't working, that were retired, that had to fit in their sleep schedule what worked for the schedule of the house. None of those people identified as homeless, none of them. They didn't identify them in the schools. They didn't identify them as, as, as young adults. They're not identified. But this is the reality in Alaska. It's this doubling up, tripling up, quadrupling houses that are not made for these many people because they have to. Housing prices and the cost for just a two-bedroom apartment is ridiculous. I will be the first to say, I work for the state. As you can tell, I'm a probation officer. That tends to give a little, aw, you got a good job, right? If my husband were to get sick and lose his job, I would be right with everybody else. I mean, it's, it's reality. And that's including some savings and including access to credit. I would still be out on the street just because one person in my household, and it's just my husband and I, loses his job. These are real things for real people. So as much as this data for COVID doesn't reflect it, it is absolutely still relevant, and it is still part of the conversation that we're all addressing.
Mr. Chilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jody, for being here. And thank you to all of your team for all the amazing work you do in your community. Question for you. One of the concerns that I have is what seems to be an increasing rate at which rental units and small starter homes are seeming to be scooped up and turned into rental properties. And you see this transition of what used to be a market of accessible and affordable housing that was available year-round, transitioning to vacation rentals in the summer and only available as long-term... in the summer, and only available as long-term rentals for nine months of the year, and that pushes people out. What kind of feedback are you getting from the community, that, to what level of effect this might actually be having?
From the individuals that are using seasonal housing, it's a frustration, because they would love to be able to find something that is not seasonal. Homer, it's really bad. Sewer, it's awful. Here locally, we have people that are buying full homes to make a profit using VRBO in order to rent it out during the summer, which is really just a three-month stint. And then some of those houses aren't even available for the rest of the month, because they're keeping it open for those destination weddings, because the peninsula can be that, or whatever kind of concept that they can rent it out and make a buck. It's certainly great for the house, house owner to be able to do that, but it sucks for finding inventory. So there is a shortage of inventory. If you listen to any of the realtors, they'll say that real estate is going like that, and they can't seem to get enough to sell in order for all the people that want houses to be able to buy them. And so these are people that have the financing, that are looking for a place, they can't give them the houses that they want. So yes, right now, it is a, it is a nightmare, if you're in a seasonal facility, that you know you're going to have to try and find something else come May, June, July, and August.
Got it.
Ms. Knoll.
I have noticed recently, at least at my school anyway, that there's been like this change, that the school lunches are free now, and there's free breakfast. And, you know, there's like this closet that's being worked on, where kids can come in and get clothes, where, you know, they don't have to tell anyone, they can just come in and grab clothes and leave. And it's like this shift I've seen recently, where people are being more accepting of people in that position. Do you notice a change in the overall community and in acceptance? Or do you, like, I'm sorry, this is confusing. Like, how much of a change do you think has happened recently? And do you think there will be more of a change in the future?
So this hearkens back to what we're set to do, is to address stigma. You know, I, you are our future, and I, I can't say that long and hard enough, because it is your attitude, and then the people that break down those barriers, that make the work that we do now, end up where this problem won't exist. We're, we're attacking it from trying to address the stigma from years and centuries of, of people degrading individuals with mental health illness, with substance abuse issues, with disability. We, we are breaking so many boundaries and pushing people to their limit, and now it's even more difficult, because people are tired. And so there's generations of people that are just tired of hearing these things and having to change. We've done so much change. Youth tend to be a lot more flexible than us old fogies, and so I would love to say that we're doing leaps and bounds in stigma reduction, but I can tell you, we're not there yet. I hope to be. It encourages me to hear that we are accepting people as people, and it doesn't matter what you need or what you can't have, that it's, it's available to all. And I think everyone in this room should adopt that mentality, and if we did, we would be in a much better society. So kudos to your school and for doing those things.
Any other questions? I have a couple here. Looking at your report here on the two-bedroom apartments, and the amount of, well, the cost of it, and how much you need to earn to be able to afford one, does that include the utilities?
It does not.
Okay, so utilities would be on top of that, which are going to run pretty expensive nowadays.
Yes.
And in, in all the reporting and the people you've talked to, have you run across any of them that are actually camping out somewhere in the peninsula?
So, this was in January, when we had our really cold spell. We had an individual that was experiencing a mental health break, was on the beaches of Kenai. It was when the wind was really whipping through, it was about 30 below, wind chill. He had been out there for weeks. So yes, they still are.
Now, would he have been eligible to use the new facility?
He was not eligible due to his mental health status at the time.
Is there any kind of services available for him?
I can tell you that the Kenai Peninsula Reentry Coalition, which addresses individuals that are released from incarceration, or had a criminal justice background, worked with this individual to get him temporary housing. So yes, there are services, but sometimes we have to get really creative in how we do it.
Okay. And then the other thing I was noticing in here on the veterans, I believe there was eight of them, which was a 12% of the total, but yet I didn't see anyone that was participating in that, that was from the VA. Is that because of...
COVID. They, they pulled out because of COVID.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, I thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Very informative. I look forward to doing as much as we can to at least, maybe not solve the problem right now, but at least get ahead of it.
Again, advocate. Please be, be our voices where I cannot be. Advocate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number five, public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to have some public comments? Seeing none, looking at the Zoom, I see no hands raised. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, item six, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to part, to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no representatives here in the chambers, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. So we'll now move on to item seven on the agenda, Public Hearings. First one will be Ordinance 2022-002, Amending Soldatna Municipal Code 2.20, excuse me, 2.28.030, Types of Employment to Create a New Category for On-Call Employees Introduced by the City Manager May Have a Motion to Enact. Mr. Carey.
Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of Ordinance 2022-002.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a housekeeping ordinance that would update our municipal code. We currently have temporary employees as a type of employment. Temporary employees are typically not employed for more than six months and, and work many hours. A good example would be in the Parks Department in the summer. This ordinance would add another type of regular employment called on-call employees. These employees typically work fewer hours, but could be for greater than six months. It's, it's best practices, and has been primarily useful in the library department over the years. This, this change won't have any operational or budgetary impact, as on-call employees are already included on the city's staffing schedule. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I don't see anyone here in the chambers that was looking to speak on it, and I see no hands raised under Zoom. Having no one else, or having no one who wishes to speak on, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Acting Manager. What type of, numerically, what size of a pool of individuals would you think might fall into the needs for the city?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Carey, through the mayor. I will ask City Librarian Rachel Nash to answer that question, because she has, she has current employees that fall into this category.
Thank you. Did you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, this is Rachel Nash. Right now, we have four employees normally. Currently, only two are in those positions, and we'll be hiring for two more positions.
Anything else, Mr. Carey? Go ahead.
So, is it your anticipation, then, that this is probably only going to deal with library services?
Thank you, Councilmember Carey, through the mayor. Currently, that's correct. It, it would add a type of employment to our municipal code. The language is, is here in your packet in the ordinance. We did consult with the city attorney in developing that language, so that it fits with, with our other types of employments. But at this point, I believe our primary use of the on-call position would be at the library. It does not prohibit the use elsewhere, but it is, as mentioned, currently on the staffing table for the FY '22 and '23 budgets, as it exists today.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, and we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Student Representative Knoll?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2022-002 passes on a 6-0 vote. Moving on to the next item will be Ordinance 2022-003, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $60,000 in the Utility System Capital Improvement Fund for Forgivable Loans from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation Introduced by the City Manager May Have a Motion to Enact. Ms. Hutchings.
I move that we enact Ordinance 2022-003, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $60,000 in the Utility System Capital Improvements Fund for Forgivable Loans from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would appropriate $60,000 for the use towards completing utility rate studies, $30,000 for drinking water rate study, and $30,000 for wastewater. The city applied for state revolving fund loans through the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. The SRF fund is a, is a federal-state funding partnership. The city scored high enough to be placed on the list of sustainable infrastructure planning programs. As such, the loan is 100% forgivable, the principal loan amount is 100% forgivable. After appropriation, if, if council passes the ordinance, we would solicit for professional services to conduct that rate study and, and bring back a resolution for contract authorization. The last rate study we conducted was in 2015. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the report. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wanting to speak on it, and looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. With no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your acting manager. Would it be fair to say that a city such as Soldatna, that's doing very well, that we become eligible, and therefore we have access to, and then we get forgiven, loans, whereas per se, maybe a town or a village that's not doing so well, probably wouldn't be eligible to get the free money to do the things to upgrade services? Is, is it fair to say that doing well gives you an advantage to getting government funds to help you serve your residents?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Carey, through the mayor. I certainly think that certain, some aspect of that is, is certainly true in the administrative capability of an organization to, to handle state or federal grants, in, in so much as the, the paperwork or complexities involved. However, many of these, these programs are intended to assist organizations that, that particularly need funding sources to remedy, you know, certain, certain aspects of critical infrastructure, or critical services that are important to, to deliver to, you know, communities and residents. And, and drinking water and wastewater is certainly one that is eligible for that, and is highly promoted through the, the federal and state partnerships. The state revolving fund is, is a, is a huge program nationwide that specifically pumps low-interest loans into all sorts of communities, disadvantaged ones, communities that, that have the ability to administer grants, but also, also organizations that, that don't. And a lot of times, the, the funding can be used for consulting services to assist with that. So certainly, in a sense, to shorten my answer to your question, it is a good thing, and you, your scoring criteria sometimes does emphasize organizations having the ability to administer funding programs.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, listening to what I'm hearing you say, then it might also be fair to say that for some communities having more difficulties, there would be other, there could be other categories of funds available to them, which would not be available to cities such as ours.
Councilmember Carey, through the mayor, absolutely, yes. That's a, that's a huge part of our job as, as city staff, and, and utility manager, Mike Allen is here tonight as well, is, is sifting through available programs and opportunities that, that our community specifically can, can take advantage of, for, for good reason, that match funding opportunities.
Excellent, and I sure think we do, and I, we want to take advantage of every opportunity we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Student Representative Knoll?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2022-003 passed on a 6-0 vote. We'll move on to item eight on the agenda, New Business. And that would bring us to B, Resolutions. Resolution 2022-006, Authorizing the City Manager to Issue Request for Proposal Soliciting Grant Writing Consulting Services for Capital Project Priorities Introduced by the Mayor and the City Manager May Have a Motion to Adopt.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-006.
Have a second. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration, and myself, speaking with the city manager, and, and looking through some of the material that has come through from the federal government on the grants that are available under the infrastructure bill, it became a little obvious that it's very complicated, and it would probably take someone on staff full-time as an employee to, to wade through it. The booklet itself is in excess of 450 pages. So it was thought that it would be best if we went out and looked for a specific grant writer that could professionally review all these and, and start doing it. And the city manager had a very informative report, and I see if Mr. Cornelius has anything more to add.
Thank you, Mayor. I just emphasize a couple items in the, in the memorandum, which, which is that this type of expenditure, proposed expenditure, is eligible under the, our existing ARPA grant funds. So we, we do have existing funding available to use towards this. So we do have existing funding available to use towards this effort. And then also that a resolution authorizing any contractual relationship would, would come back before the council for their approval.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App used by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak on that. And looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. The item is now back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Nelson?
And I can certainly hear what you said, Mayor, in your report on, it would be quite a load for a full-time employee to, to go through this on federal grant requirements is kind of, we just discussed in the last item are certainly complex. I'm just, maybe this is directed towards the administration. I understand, you know, maybe Stephanie would be the better person to ask and, and we can do that. But has there been discussion from a city level of bringing on an in-house person that would be an expert on this? And I, I ask this because I know that having somebody on staff that truly understands this, this stuff may be very beneficial to the city in the long run. But I'm also suspecting that that type of expenditure wouldn't be eligible for ARPA funds. So I guess that was my question is, is there thought of maybe converting this to an FTE in the future or was that discounted? If you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
Mr. Cornelius, you want to tackle that one?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Mr. Nelson through the mayor. We, we did deliberate in-house quite a bit on, on that, that exact question. There are pros and cons to, to both scenarios. Ultimately, we decided that the depth and breadth of funding opportunities that, that is out there, we, we do feel like we will be effective in hiring an expert that, that one does this for a living and is likely doing this for multiple entities and that, that we would be best advantaged to, to identify and then also potentially develop and submit these, these grant submissions. We've done some research on agencies and entities out there that provide these services and they are not a one-man show or one-person show typically. They're, they're a firm that has resources that are broader than just hiring, you know, a single individual. So we did consider that at the end, after considering a lot of the different implications, we, we think that hiring a consultant to assist with this is probably in our best interest in the long run.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. To the administration, if we currently had a, let's say, a full-time person who worked for the city that their responsibility was grant writing, would they be eligible for these type of funds?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Carey through the mayor. Their time spent on certain grant programs, oftentimes administrative effort is an eligible expense for the, through the grant. It will really depend on the funding opportunity that's spelled out. The individual would, would not be, but their salaries through the city typically is offset by that. And that does include consulting efforts. So whether it was an in-house employee that was working on a grant submission, their time typically, many times, is eligible for reimbursement. Likewise, with a outside consultant, their time also would, a lot of times, be eligible as well.
All right.
Go ahead.
I'd like to just add, we have discussed this in different decades in terms of the idea of a full-time versus again, when there was particular need. So I, I think this shows the wisdom of the city in the past as well as currently, that now that we have this great opportunity, again, almost 500 pages to go through of different things plus of funds, which is another one thing, there's actually money available, I think it's really wise for us to do it through this process as compared to taking on a full-time, permanent employee who would then be looking to find things after this pool of money was gone. And so I just want to say I support the administration's effort. I think this reflects good decisions in the past. And once again, everything that the people of Saldana are eligible for, I hope we snag. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Last week, the mayor and I were in Juneau for the Alaska Municipal League and there was a lot of talk about the CARES Act, the ARPA, the infrastructure bills. There are so many opportunities out there right now and grant writers are definitely hard to come by these days because from the villages that are looking to improve their water and wastewater treatment facilities to the Port of Alaska, everybody's looking for help in getting these grant fund, grants written to be successful and rise to, rise to the top. So I, I wish you good luck.
To add a little bit to that, AML is also looking at, looking to have a firm available to help and assist the smaller communities with grant writing. But there is going to be a great deal of effort out there to try to find grant writers. Like I said, this, this bill is so huge, some of the grants that are available still don't have regulations and, and rules written on how to get to them. And so that's going to take the research of, you know, and, and a grant writer that we would bring onboard to do these kind of things, so. Okay, any other comments from the council? Seeing none, now I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-006 passes on a 6-0 vote. Moving on to other items and that would be Action Memorandum 2022-005, determining the fiscal '22 Cycle Two Mini Grant Awards introduced by the acting city clerk. A report from the acting city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Saldana advertised and received two applications for the FY 22 Mini Grant Program Cycle Two. All applicants were found to meet the eligibility requirements of the mini-grant policy. The two applications received were Bridges Community Resources Network Incorporated for funding for $5 food gift cards for Project Homeless Connect and Greenhouse Music, Delena Music, requesting funding for online school music program. There are $2,000 remaining for use in the cycle, in Cycle Two. Awards are limited to $1,000 per recipient per fiscal year. The scoring rubric used for ranking applications allows for a highest possible score of 20 points from each of the mayor and council members and a combined highest possible score of 140 points.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App used by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. So we'll bring this item back before the council. We had a work session earlier. We had testimony from the two grant proposers. I think everyone has filled out their score sheet and turned it in. Is that correct? Oh, where's?
Mine's been filled out for a while, sorry.
Are there any council comments? Seeing none at this time, we're, we've submitted the score sheets to the clerk for, excuse me, for scoring. of 135 points. And the second highest ranking group is Greenhouse Music with a score of 68 points. May I have a motion to award and, and please state the dollar amount being awarded to each of the highest ranking applicants? Oh, Mr. Chilton?
Do we have to do one combined motion for both or would it be permissible to do a motion for one at a time so we can discuss the merit of each individual one?
I would entertain it as if you want to make a motion for awarding to both applicants, that would be acceptable.
Well, if it's permissible, I'd like to go ahead and just make a motion to award a $1,000 mini-grant award to Project Homeless Connect and we can discuss the merit of that one and then move on to the next one afterwards if someone else wants to make a motion for that one. If that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part of it.
I, I'd like to make my motion specific to Homeless Connect only to start with and then we can work through that. And then if someone else wants to make a motion to do an additional award for the greenhouse one, then we could do that following.
I believe the motion is to award the $1,000, $1,000 award to Bridges.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor Parker. Any discussion?
I would say that we, I think this is our first time reviewing mini-grants as a council as a whole. Prior to this, it had been a review process handled by a mini-grant committee for a couple of years that I had sat on along with Councilman Ruffridge. And I know that we've had the Project Homeless Connect come before us multiple times in the past and they've, they've been reviewed as meeting all of the criteria and we've, we've given them mini-grants before and they've, they've done really, really good things in the community with these. And I, I think that I would fully support them continuing to do so, so that is where I stand.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
Yes. So we have, as a council, been very supportive of Project Homeless Connect. And the city administration took the time to help put together the package identifying opportunities, grant awards that were available. And this was something that the city, we donated that back to Project Homeless to help them and help guide them going forward. So the work that they do to, to help our homeless community, to help our entire community is extremely invaluable and strongly support providing them with the $1,000.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey? I apologize, I apologize. And Chilton?
Yes.
Count, Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
The award to Bridges Community Resources Network Incorporated passed on a 5-0 vote. And is there any other motions to make any additional distribution of those, that $2,000 Seeing none, we will close the, the voting on that. Move on to item number nine, mayor and council reports. My report, a couple of things here. Vice Mayor Parker and myself, we were in Juneau last week. It rained, I think, every minute we were there. In fact, it sometimes it didn't rain, it poured. Did manage to get a little wet. It was very informative sessions. They had a lot of, a lot of sessions on the infrastructure bill, which is called the bipartisan infrastructure bill or legislation. It's quite a bit to it. There's a lot of things, as I mentioned earlier, that still don't have rules on it. There are some of them right now that are up for grant approval. There's quite a bit of work to be done. I think one of the things I did see that broadband is something that we might have been looking for here locally, but I think the priority that came out of that was the broadband's going to the under, underserved areas. And that probably would not include Saldana because we have available, I'm not quite sure how they say it, but 100 megawatts and 25 whatever. So we probably wouldn't be able to fit in on that grant. But a lot of the other grants, they're going to be extended over a five-year period. So there's going to be a lot of work and that's why I'm glad we're, we're going out for a request for proposals to get a grant writer or a firm to do that stuff for us. Like I said, very informative. There will be a, I don't want to call it a training session, but it's going to be a conference in Anchorage on April the 11th that will go over some of the infrastructure bill and how it's going to be handled, what's available, so forth and so on. It's going to be presented by the federal government. We plan on attending it. There will also be a meeting the next day that'll be something that the AML is putting on, on April the 12th. I'm not quite sure what all that, I haven't seen an agenda for that yet, so I'm not quite sure what all it's going to be. That will be held in Anchorage, like I said, April 11th and the follow-up on April the 12th.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just to elaborate on what you just said, at the beginning, on the first day, you said that we will be attending it. Is that the city's, I'd like to attend. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, there will be members from the, the administration attending. I plan on attending and I think we would, you know, open it up to council members if they would like to attend.
Thank you.
Oh, snow. We've had a lot of it, quite a bit of it. Looking at the chart that they put together, I think we're well over normal. Looking at my front yard, it was about 12-foot snow berm out there. I can't see my neighbor's car. But because of the snow, the rain and everything else, some of our side streets and, and our main roads have gotten a little icy and snow-covered and, and icy potholes, if you want to call them those. The city Public Works is doing all they can and hopefully in the next couple of days, they'll try and get some of the snow berms cleared up and maybe redo some of the streets that are in worse shape than some of the others. But we've had some issues with a lack of operators, so that's kind of slowed things down. But it's being worked on. And I appreciate everything the Public Works Department has done, though I'm thinking of putting in the, an ordinance that states that part of the mayor's salary is, snow blowing his driveway. I'm getting a little old shoveling snow. Okay, we'll move on to council reports on boards and commissions. We have the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District Board meeting by Mr. John Zarneski and will be appearing by Zoom. You're on, Mr. Zarneski.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District met last week and they welcomed two new board members. One is Liz DeMoss. She owns and operates the Seward Ale House and Fourth Avenue Lodging in Seward. She's also a realtor and is serving on the Seward City Council. And the second member that was welcomed to the board is Mr. Jeff Petrick. He currently is living in Moose Pass. He's also executive director of the Lutik Pride Shellfish Hatchery in Seward. Mr. Dillon reported on Industry Outlet Forum and by all accounts, it was a huge success. We had 120 people attend in person. We had another 90 online. There were a number of really good presentations from our local trends here with regard to the real estate market, the Alaska Marine Highway System, medical, the impact of medical services on our, our local economy and there was a... services on our, our local economy, and there was an interesting piece on small business succession planning by John Vittner at the Small Business Development Center, and that's just to name a few of the programs. Also, two of our three microloans were paid off during this last two months. That leaves one microloan remaining. We also did receive a clean audit. Our financial books were audited, and there were no findings. And then last, or make it second to last, CAEPED will be requesting an increase in funding from the borough this coming budget year. So, currently, or I should say, over the past four or five years now, CAEPED has been receiving $100,000 in funding, and that's despite the fact that the Assembly has offered in the past to increase it. This year, it appears that we're going to need those extra funds, and in part, that is because of changes in the borough's, the borough's status as far as meeting federal distress criteria. So what that means is, because we no longer meet that distress criteria, where in the past we were doing a 20% share on grants, now the match is 50%. So we anticipate that we'll be spending more money on, on the, the local share of these grants that we've been receiving. And also, the increase is due to a threefold increase in our property taxes at the CAEPED building and land. So for those reasons, CAEPED is going to be requesting additional funds from the Borough Assembly. Finally, the board will be holding a strategic planning retreat on March 31st, and there'll be a number of topics. They'll be covered, everything from facilities planning to transitional planning. And also, we'll be doing and hosting a statewide presentation on the SEDs or the statewide economic development program and planning. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Zarneski? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneski, for your report. Happy to hear Mr. Hetrick is joining the EDD board with his background with hatcheries as well as mariculture. He will be a valuable addition to the board. He's known Jeff for a number of years and always value his insights.
He seems like he will be a great fit. Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Any other questions for Mr. Zarneski? Saying none, thank you for your report, and we'll move on to Kenai River Special Management Area Board meeting by Mr. Carmichael, and he will be also attending by Zoom.
Zoom, zoom, zoom. I think that was in an old kid, kid's show, and we all prospered from it. The charisma board finally came to a point where to do a resolution, not finally, but got to a point where we did a resolution and passed the resolution recommending the passage of Senate Bill 148, which requires boaters, anybody operating a boat born after 2007 and over a horsepower of 10, has to, it will be required to fulfill a boater safety course. Within the resolution, also asked that they, a faction be added to that bill that also requires life jackets for all members on boats with some excuses, exclusion, especially on, at least on the Kenai and some of those rivers. So, that's a pretty bold step. It's not, it's not something that's universally accepted, but in terms of public safety, in terms of those things, I having been ejected out of a boat and sunk one, am a firm believer of those flotation devices, because despite all my hot air, I still sing. So, but that was interesting in terms of, there's not a lot going on in terms of the, besides the information we got from the last meeting, which was the very in-depth DOT information regarding the bypass, but everybody's gearing up, hiring their summer employees, and we'll be advertising shortly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Carmichael? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Carmichael, for your report.
Thank you.
We will now move to item 10 on the agenda, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report. I was going to touch on snow removal. I think you did a great job summarizing that for us. I'll just add that with authorization to issue the RFP for grant services, we are intending to jump right on that. I've been kind of working on that in the background, and so we'll plan on issuing that ASAP. In the meantime, we do have team members that are attending the various webinars and presentations that are out there trying to decipher all the pots of money and grant, grant programs and notice of funding opportunities to include state presentations, federal, White House. Everybody's kind of clamoring over the opportunity to get money, and then before, you know, before we even get that, understanding how to get that money. So, we'll be embarking on that ASAP and intend to bring back a, a resolution authorizing the contractor word as soon as we can. Thank you.
Just to add to that, some of those grants actually require a match from the, the community, so that's why it's important to have somebody that's taking the time to look at and, and write those, write those grants up. Any council questions from the city manager? Saying none, we'll move on to item 11, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak? Saying none, we'll look at the Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. We'll move on to council comments, and we'll start tonight with Ms. Knowles.
Thank you, Mayor. The Sohigh Ski Team will be going to state on Thursday and Saturday, and we will also be welcoming new classes into the roster such as forensics, justice, cosmetology, and EMT courses, as well as extended periods for construction, culinary, and welding classes.
Thank you. We'll now go to the other corner, Ms. Hutchings.
Always in a corner. I guess that's the best of us, right? So, the only thing I would like to say is Frozen River Fest looked like it was a smashing success. I was over there for an hour or so, and it was full of people, even though it was wet, and the fireworks were incredible, the music was great, so I think everybody had a great time. In addition to the fact that was a very busy night, there was also the fundraiser out at the Sports Center with the Brown Bears and the Food Bank and the Boys and Girls Club, and I spoke with Tim Ritter yesterday, and he said they got $30,000 out of that fundraiser, so that was really great. And I guess they're splitting it between the two entities, so. Anyway, I think it was a great weekend for everybody. Thank you.
Good. Glad to see people out and about and doing things. Mr. Nelson?
I think it was a good presentation today from Project Homeless Connect, and, you know, talking about fundraisers and some of those things. I think something that we often forget, because, you know, I think a lot of the same people do it, and, and sometimes they do it very quietly, is there really is just a tremendous amount of people that are doing good, and whether that's a charity, or different organizations, or fundraising, or just volunteering time. So, I want to thank the volunteers with Homeless Connect and all of the civic organizations and charitable organizations we have here in town.
Mr. Ruffridge?
No comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carey?
Like Mrs. Parker, I always have comments. I do find it interesting that in the federal government, spending the billions and billions and billions of dollars, it is creating a new job, and that is thousands and thousands of people providing the job of finding ways to get to that money. And again, grant writers are going to be premier employees, and they're going to make good money as they find ways to spend the money the government has decided to give away. It'll be interesting once the government stops giving away all this money, where will those jobs go? Those individuals are probably still going to expect to have jobs. And so again, just the government and spending money creates jobs for people to learn how to spend money. I did find it interesting listening to Andrew. He only said anyone born after 2007, there's a new rule for them, and just, wow, just lets me know how old I am. First I thought, 2007, could they be doing anything? That's how young they are. Another irony I find in government, because the government has increased the assessment, therefore the taxes on the KPED building, they're now going to have to get more money from the government to pay the taxes that they now have to pay. And again, that wonderful cycle of government. We raise taxes, in this case, almost on ourselves, at least on groups that we pay for, and so that, yeah, they'll need to ask for more than $100,000 so they can pay the taxes that, another form of government, as well as the borough, is increasing. Irony, we have funds available for a homeless coordinator down here on the Kenai Peninsula Borough, but we can't find a government agency entity that will accept the funds. Again, as part of working with Homeless Connect and many different groups, as Dan and others have mentioned, the borough refusal to, again, allow that to be a creative position paid for by, again, government, right now leaves that position open. There will be questions asked in terms of other government groups, and I've even heard the city of Saldana mention, is maybe someone asked if they would be willing to house that position under their budget, because the, the government funds can only go to a government agency. And so again, we all agree absolutely, there's a huge need to help the homeless. Funds are available to have a homeless coordinator to do a much better, much more effective and efficacious job of helping the homeless, but so far, the borough administration isn't willing to consider that, even though they wouldn't be paying for it. But again, there's probably lots I don't know. And Jody, and again, the largest thing she said, and she said it over and over, we need to be advocate for those people who can't represent themselves. We need to be advocate for, for those, for whatever the situation is in their life that are in a period where they need help, and I hope that we all, and again, this council, I think, is very good, and the administration, I hope we're all advocates. None of us know when we might be in a situation where we need help from people to do things that we can't do on our own, and I hope all of us are willing to, to give a hand to those who, who need help and that we can help. I thank the council for all the work they've done today, and I know we still have more ahead through an executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Mr. Chilson?
No comments tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Whitney. In addition to the comments that the mayor made about being at AML, we were also able to go and visit with some of the Kenai Peninsula representatives, Representative Vance and Senator Machiki, bring them up to date on what's going on. While Representative Vance is from Homer, her district boundary is just on the other side of the city limits here, so she does represent a lot of people here in the central peninsula, so it's good to keep her informed, and she and her staff appreciated that we did come by. One of the things that the administration has done is they've expanded the COVID report that they gave us a few months ago, and the mayor and I were able to share that with other communities, as well as a person that works now for the community and regional affairs, and they raved about that report, and they said, this is a report that shows how we spent the $10 million in the distribution with basically 75% going to businesses and individuals here in the, in the central peninsula. Anyway, over and over, it was commented, and make sure, Mr. Corneals, this gets back to everybody within the administration, they said that is the best report they have seen. And I, I suspect it will be used as a model in, in other communities. The, the folks, folks from, from Anchorage loved it. Folks from communities in southeast, they, they raved as well. So, you can tell Lauren, Stephanie, and others that it was very well received. And I would echo about the roads, not only here in the city of Saldana, but in the borough. I suspect the city of Kenai, Seward, Homer, throughout the Kenai Peninsula, everybody's challenged by roads, and the crews are doing everything they can, and just as they think they're getting caught up, Mother Nature throws us another curve. So, should, should we find that we're running short on, on funds, I would be more than willing, we need to continue to make sure that our, our roads are safe for the entire community. So, thanks to Scotty and, and all the crews for all the hard work you guys are doing. That is all.
Thank you for mentioning the two visits we had. Totally went over the top of my head, forgot about them. So, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, is item 13, executive session, city clerk recruitment, AS 44.62.310C2, subject, subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of, of any person. In accordance with Alaska statutes 44.62.310C2, the discussion of the city clerk recruitment is a subject that may tend to prejudice the reputation and character of an applicant for city employment, therefore may be discussed in executive session. Once the council returns from executive session, a motion may be made, giving direction on the next step in the city clerk recruitment process. May I have a motion to enter into executive session, Mr. Jordan? Mr. Chilson?
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to enter into an executive session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with AS 44.62.310C2. This is a matter that could prejudice the reputation or character of an applicant for city employment, therefore may be held in executive session. The applicant to be discussed has elected to have the discussion take place in executive session. The executive session will include Mayor Whitney, city council members, human resources manager Reagan, and city attorney Charles Ciola. Acting city clerk Hewitt will be included when the council requests her presence.
Did I hear you say the city, acting city manager?
No. Would you like to have him included? It was not in the motion. We'll also include the acting city manager.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Saying none. For those attending through Zoom, the Zoom meeting will not be resumed after the executive session. After the executive session is over, the meeting will briefly resume at soldana.org/streaming. And we will go into executive session at this point. Ready? Okay. May I have a motion come out of executive session?
I would, I would move that we exit executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there any objections to convening back into regular session? Saying none, we'll back into regular session by unanimous consent. Directions to the administration are to continue, proceed on with the process, hiring process as, as you normally would. Any questions from the administration?
Just one question. So, the next step in the process would be to conduct the, initiate the, yep.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
So, this would be moving forward with the motion that was adopted by the council on February 9th, that, I will, I will read, read that motion. That we offer the position of the city clerk to Sandra Modi, subject to successful reference check, successful background check, and contract negotiations. So, moving forward with the completion of those items, and the next steps are dependent upon what transpires through that process.
Great. And when the, as that next steps are complete, Jessica should be coordinating with the hiring committee or the council as a whole. Mr. Mayor? Yes, okay. Thank you.
The authorizations to the background investigator tonight, and he'll have those first thing in the morning.
And it would be helpful if you could possibly give us a, an estimate of time.
So, it, it takes up to two weeks. I'll check in with him tomorrow morning, but last I talked to him, it, it does take about two weeks to get through the process.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, unless somebody has more questions. Saying none. Item 14 is Item 14 is meeting announcements. March 2nd, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30 PM, and March 9th, 2022, city council meeting here in Chambers at 6:00 PM. And having no further business before us, the meeting is now adjourned.